Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Abington Planning Board. I'm Bruce Hughes, the Chair, and welcome. And 6 o'clock, and I call a meeting to order. So Ms. Shea.
All right. I think the first thing, if you don't mind, we'll just skip ahead and do this A&amp;R Form A application on the agenda. So if you want to do that, here is the application. It's for 1500 Bedford Street.
I see. Okay. Let's do the Form A. 500, 1500 Bedford Street LLC.
Is everybody here for it?
Yes.
Gentlemen.
I'm Peter Tuttle from Tuttle Answering. Happy to answer any questions for it.
Can we have you come up to the microphone?
Want to come up and talk a little bit, please?
So all our fans at home?
Sure.
Peter Tuttle from Tuttle Answering. I prepared the A&amp;R plan and happy to answer any questions with it.
Why don't you give us a sketch about what this is all about, what the project is?
Well, right now, there's one deed that covers both properties. And it's actually split into two assessors' maps as it sits. So they want to cut off the existing house lot by itself and leave the business side on its own. So it's the old pool and patio space there, but they actually owned the residence next door and this one. It's all in one deed. So what this will do is this will make it so we can split it up between the two of them.
Will this be residential or presidential?
I don't know what the zoning is, but it's, I think it's highway, so it's business district, I believe.
And it's in the marijuana overlay and the Business Development District.
Business Development or industrial?
It's in business. Oh, I don't know. Right.
How come the little jog instead of just going straight out?
There's a foundation that's in there that's a loading dock for the business that's there. So it kind of brings that around and makes that so that lot's conforming to zoning with the setbacks.
Yeah, I guess that's it. Just it goes straight from the street, straight back.
Right.
Why not just go straight back from the street?
Leaves a little more space for the lot next door. A lot of it's not really useful anyways. If you look at the wetland line that's on there, it's kind of wrapping right up against the edge of that as well.
Oh, we've seen developers build with less. Okay. But it's all in compliance with setbacks and everything and...
Yes.
I see you nod. Can I hear you nod? Yes.
What, that it complies with zoning? It appears to, yes.
So about curb cuts, is there any issue?
There's already curb cuts there. I think there's two already in the industrial part of it there, and there's also at least one for the residential as well.
So you wouldn't have to go through Maston as far as curb cuts are?
No, no, they're already existing.
What is the wetland line on? Nothing necessary, if I'm just curious, the wetland line on Lot 3, because it jogs around on Lot 4 and then kind of stops at the proposed split, assuming it has to just end there.
It follows right along the back of that. There's a, it's a pretty good drop behind the building there as it goes up into the wetlands and almost right up against the swamp line that's out there.
Yeah.
The swamp line's really kind of subjective. It's, you know, where's the edge of the swamp you walk back to, you get wet? There's really no definition for it. But right behind the building there, it is, it does drop off pretty quickly.
Okay.
But we didn't push any more on that end of it. I mean, it's already a developed site. They're not going to plan on anything else going on out behind that building. There's just no room to do anything, so we kind of stopped it right there on the second lot.
So what will be the frontages of both of these lots?
125.
125.
Yeah.
Well, 125 is a minimum, but there's 400 for each of them.
Oh, please, you have it as an R30? The Business Development District, and then you have an R30 in the marijuana. I'm not sure that that has ever been a residential district. Do you have your bookcase?
No, I'd bring... I usually bring the planning zoning book.
That's all right, I'll go grab mine.
I should always bring it, Tim.
I know. Oh, actually, I know. I should be able to look it up. My email. That's in the overlay district, the Business Development, I think, and then Highway Commercial one is underneath that.
Okay.
So I'm trying to figure out where your, that's...
We're right against the town line.
So that would be butts, and then you guys would be right here.
Right.
And that looks like maybe yours is an R30?
In the back part, yeah.
Is that the property line?
This little piece in the back in here.
That triangle?
Yeah.
It's way over.
So that would be, that would be up in this section in here.
So right here, this triangle, the butts way in the front?
Yeah, this is the Waymouth Town Line on the side here, and then this is kind of an offset to Bedford Street that goes back so far, and then behind that is the other zone.
Yeah, it's like 200 feet back or something close to that. Okay, that's okay. I'll show you. Well, they follow this little triangle piece back there belongs to them as well. Okay.
We're like 600 feet back from the street with the...
Yeah, I think those, I think those go like 200 feet back. So there's Business Highway Commercial, and that little tiny triangle down there is theirs. So does our 30. That little triangle on the Waymouth line, right there.
We just want to make sure that everything is okay.
Yes. So in answer to the question for the frontage there, too, the lot force got 307 feet, and Lot 3's got over 500, so, yeah, so it's okay as far as...
Yes, very good.
Upstairs, because up there.
Yeah, so I'm assuming Highway Commercial is the underlying zoning to the Waymouth line, and then we put the Business Development over it, and then we put Marijuana over that, which is that, probably that checked, green checked.
Right. So some corridor there, so that's, so this is...
That's part of that property, which is why the R30 is on there.
So that's probably this?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
So...
So just to understand the paperwork here, who's the applicant?
It says the application.
I know, but I have two papers, and they're different.
They passed.
Oh, passed it down. Okay, so the applicant is 1500 Bedford Street LLC.
Yep.
And their manager is Israel Baroso, I believe. There are two secretaries. I got an original application, and I questioned that application because there was Israel Baroso at a Derby Street address.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so then I went to the Secretary of State's website, and there were two LLCs, but one was 1500 Bedford Street WS, and the addresses didn't match the name, so we got a revised application. My apologies for making it confusing, I just leave everything together that I get.
All right, so the applicant's Mr. Harris, the owner is 1500...
We got a revised application, so the applicant slash owner is now Israel Baroso, 1500 Bedford Street LLC at the VFW Drive address.
Okay.
Which matches the Secretary of State website Corporation Division.
So the 1500 Bedford Street WS is, is that the old owner's?
I don't know who that is.
Ben Lyons?
Because it's a different LLC.
Ben Lyons isn't part of the group?
The old owner.
Old owner, okay. All right.
So, to jump to Rick, can Rick, do you guys have any questions for the questions?
Nope, I imagine we'll be seeing him later.
So would someone like to make a motion to accept this? So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I have this signed out?
Thank you, boss.
Thank you. And you guys don't mind picking it up tomorrow for my last?
Sure.
Yep.
My turn.
Thank you. See you. Adios. Okay. We'll be here then.
I'm sorry, Liz, where do I sign this?
On the bottom where it says Planning Board.
Okay.
This one that says Town Clerk and it says Planning Board.
And today is March 31st.
Yep.
6:50. Okay, good, I'll give you the split.
Sure, thank you.
So we've done the call of war, we've done the A&amp;R.
We'll do the minutes.
Let's do the minutes. Gentlemen had a chance to review the minutes of the March 3 meeting.
Those weren't in the package. Those weren't in the package, were they?
Oh.
No, they weren't.
My bad, my bad.
So I guess we can't do the minutes this time.
Can you, or don't do them?
Sorry, that wasn't...
That's because Kevin went home sick.
Oh, the nerve.
The nerve! So we'll just pop that to next Monday.
Okay, so we'll do that.
All right.
Any correspondence?
No.
The Zoning Board of Appeals, no, we don't have that.
No.
And we just did the Form A.
We did the Form A, so if you would like to... Trying to get the right set of zoning stuff together here. You can read that legal notice.
All right. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 31st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the Abington Town Hall. Planning Board is to consider the following amendment to the Town of Abington zoning bylaw, Chapter 175. Full text of the proposed zoning amendment and all supporting documentation can be found at the Planning Board office and at the Town Clerk's office in Town Hall. Additionally, it can be found on the Town of Abington website. amend 175-82E, Board of Appeals, Public Hearings, strike the words in the following sentence, quote, "The Board of Appeals give notice therefore in a newspaper of each owner as appearing on the most recent tax list of land abutting and to the abutter of the abutters within 300 feet of the lot of land in question, and stricken is whatever great distance squared." And this was put in the Enterprise, advertised in the Enterprise?
Yep.
All right.
It was published March 17th and March 24th. As some of you who attended our EDU meeting may recall, the Building Inspector asked for this change. There had been some recent controversy over a butter notification, and he felt that this language would clear that, striking the language that was in there would clear it up. I also wanted to move applicant to the Secretary of the Zoning Board, but they wouldn't let me do it because we didn't have to. That's next year's.
So the town regulating boards were in accord with this, this is something that they reported.
So as the Building Inspector, he's also the zoning enforcement officer, he was the one who asked for this change to simplify a butter notification. But as the Planning Board, you guys do the sponsor of the zoning articles, so it's your recommendation.
I don't see anybody in the audience to talk about this.
No, and I will tell you, the Building Inspector did offer to send a communication and email a letter expressing his support. I didn't feel like he needed to do that.
Okay. So can you just explain to me what's changing?
We're taking out whichever distance is greater.
I guess what was the controversy?
I'm not sure. I wasn't a party to that conversation, but I think there was some consternation that people that... And are butted to a project, felt like more people should have been notified.
Yep.
And they were hanging their hat on whichever distance is greater as how more people should have been notified.
All right, so if this is approved, who will be notified moving forward?
So each owner as appearing on the most recent tax list of land abutting and to the abutter of the abutters of within 300 feet of the lot of land in question. I agree with you, I don't even know why whichever distance is greater was in there. It seems to make no sense to me.
I assume what they're saying is if there is no abutters within 300 feet, that they don't get a...
Right.
Notification.
A butters to be abutters.
The abutters to be abutters.
So the butters will continue to get notification, I think.
Yeah, right.
This, I think what we're doing here is extending it to the abutters of the abutters.
Tax list of land abutting and to the abutter of the abutters of within 300 feet.
If they're within 300 feet, which seems like if you're within 300 feet, it's appropriate that you know what's happening, and you have an opportunity to come to a public hearing and voice your thoughts.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not shrinking the number of people who will get notifications.
I don't think we, I think we're just making it so they can explain it to people clearer, right? It's going to be just that, a butted, a butter, and then this, which appears not to make any sense to me anyway, whichever distance is greater. We're taking that out of the mix for clarification.
I mean, just grammatically, I would also take out the "of" before "within 300 feet", but I think that's a grammatical error.
We can do that next year, along with the secretary.
I mean, can that be ruled a, what's the term when it's basically just a stray narrata? That's what it's called? Stray mark, stray thing?
Yeah.
and then if there's an abutter of an abutter within 300 feet of the lot, they will also receive one.
Correct.
All right, so abutters of a butters more than 300 feet will not.
Correct.
Okay.
So what we're voting on tonight is to recommend this for...
Recommend approval or pass over to town meeting?
Town meeting. I think this is pretty clear, so if someone would like to make a motion to recommend town meeting, accept this? So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the second hearing notice, that's right, is for the design guidelines. So as we all know, when the board constructed the multifamily overlay district, AKA the MBTA Communities District last year, there was a section in there that said that you could adopt design guidelines for that district. These design guidelines are strictly for this district. I'm thinking maybe next year you can start poking away design guidelines for the rest of the town. But for now, you can do what you do, you can do, right? So you guys have seen these before, Kevin made changes based on your feedback, so what you have before you tonight would be the recommended design guidelines. Again, I don't think any of this is carved in stone, gives a board a lot of leeway, there's a lot of should versus shall.
The guidelines.
Yeah, the guidelines.
Lot requirements.
For the record, should I read this?
Please.
Yes, okay. All right. The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 31st, 2025, at 6:05 p.m. at the Abington Town Hall. Planning Board is to consider the addition of design guidelines to Section 175-48, one multifamily overlay district. Full text of the design guidelines and supporting documentation can be found at the Planning Board office and at the Town Clerk's office in Abington Town Hall, and additionally can be found on the Town of Abington website. And this was advertised in the Enterprise on 3/17 and 3/24/25.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, I think our prior discussions on this, as you had mentioned, Liz, we had, we didn't have anything like this out there.
Correct.
And it represents a good first step in trying to provide developers with some of the things that we might like to see, and kind of opens it up for discussion. So I don't think we intend to do anything more than that with this.
Correct.
It's just kind of get something out there for an applicant to review, and then...
See what the board would like to see.
And then exchange our thoughts.
Yeah, yeah.
So town meeting has to adopt this?
No.
They don't?
No, according to, I don't have, oh, do I have this? I don't have the original MFOD language with me, but it was literally you could adopt them and file them with the town clerk. I think Rick, the other Rick, wanted to make sure that if the public wanted to provide feedback, they were allowed to do that, so we followed the same process as we with the zoning change, but it's not, they didn't have to go to town meeting.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yep.
And so these won't apply to, for instance, a 40B that's built in the district, only projects built under the MFOD bylaw.
Correct.
So if hypothetically, if someone goes in and purchases something, and they're going to build something, but it's not technically under the multifamily, it's under the underlying zoning, they wouldn't have to abide by this?
No, so if they came in and did something under the transit-oriented district?
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to abide by that.
Okay.
A 40B, obviously, they're not restricted.
Yeah, just to be careful in the language.
Yeah.
Nobody has to abide by this. It's kind of what we're putting out there for, it's the first step in initiating some kind of dialogue.
Right.
About what we'd like to see.
Yep, okay.
And again, I think this is something, a conversation that should continue about the rest of town.
Yeah.
Right? Moving forward.
Yep.
Because it almost seems like, okay, we're going to do this here, but nowhere else, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, and that was because of the, that clause in the 3A.
Yeah, and to clarify that, because we didn't have, I mean, all we had was, it was a New England actor referred back to what it says in our zoning bylaw.
Yep.
The New England architecture, so this actually does provide a basis for what you guys would like to see.
Good first step.
Yeah, perfect.
Yep.
Yep.
Kevin did a nice job.
Yep.
He did.
The photos from Southwick, those were black and white?
Yeah, they're only black and white.
Okay.
I tried to find colored photos, pretty good.
We might go out this summer, you know, to work in the field.
Okay.
Your photos were helpful.
Like a nice day.
Right?
Yeah, we can go revisit some of those photos in the spring when things are green and looking after them.
Right, when everything looks pretty.
Instead of the season of the sticks.
My lawn is starting to grow, I'm putting fertilizer.
Great, I got crocus.
Yeah, got the lawnmower over in the shop, guy said, well, take it a month, it'll be This is great, Kevin, thank you. Any further comments, guys?
I can just have a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you. And just one last quick thing, I know we've sort of talked about this before, the stormwater inspections and ASBILs of the stormwater systems, and I know there was conversation about, and I just, I want to make it the future agenda item if we could. The reason behind this is we were working with the water department, and they can file with DEP. I don't, I'm not, I don't know all the technical stuff, but like I provided them with any information I had, like the Green Based Solutions bylaws that we adopted and stuff like that, and all of that counts for credit with DEP, I guess, and gives us more water capacity because they feel like we're saving water so we can have some more water. And I was not a, like, I did not get that connection before, and stormwater systems are key to that, because that is actually taking a lot of water and putting it into, or, you know, draining it to where it's supposed to go. So just for future thought, I won't put it for April, but maybe the May meeting, we can talk about maybe doing that again. I know that when, the last time we had this conversation, it was just about people who had to conform to the stormwater bylaw, but there are people putting stormwater systems in that are under that threshold that I think we should have ASBILs for, so they can go to the water department, and the water department can like en masse send this stuff to DEP every couple of years and say, hey, this is what we've all done. You know, how much credit can we get for it? How much are we saving?
What's an example of someone who we would want to be aware of or to have an ASBIL for?
198 Centarap. They didn't hit the stormwater threshold.
Okay.
Because they didn't disturb more than an acre of land, but they did install a stormwater system.
So DEP wants us to document what we're recharging underground more?
So under the stormwater management permit?
Yeah.
We have to document it, but like I said, that only hits that threshold of an acre or more.
Right.
But we are, the board's approving projects under that threshold, and stormwater systems are being built under that threshold, and I think it would look through town if we had those ASBILs.
Yeah.
Couple of reasons, right? If something goes wrong, we would have NASBIL for it. The other one would be Whale Street, was that 10 Whales?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Zabowski did, again, didn't hit the threshold of it, but they didn't storm, they didn't install a stormwater system. Yeah, so DEP will almost give us credit back on our water. I don't know if the smaller systems would generate anything? I can ask that question.
But enough pennies in the jar, and it adds up.
Right.
As we learned many years ago.
Right.
Okay, so for instance, the idea of this being, I'm sorry for taking up time, the idea being that if we're discharging back into the ground versus letting it run off into a collected sewer system or stormwater system, that's more ideal, and...
Yes, if we're collecting it and recharging it, yes.
Versus putting it into a stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
Instead of pipe... Instead of piping it out into the row, having go into the store, yes.
So for instance, like with the DPW and fire station yard, a lot of that's recharge to an extent.
Yes.
An overflow or it goes into a pipe, but. That would be an example of a credit that we can use.
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah. And I think they hit the threshold.
Yeah.
Of over an acre. Right? Um, and they, and I'm sure they'll document their underground stormwater. Um, the way it gets built so we can use it because it's a municipality, so I'm sure we can get a copy of that. And send it to the water department as part of our. Um, I think we're all trying to work more collaboratively, collaboratively, it's late in the day for a big work.
Easy fuse.
I know, right? With Rockland and the water department, I think. Trying to maybe get back every drop we can, right? Because it's very, very constrained.
Does that mean we get an as built for nine ninety nine Adam Street?
Um, eventually, I guess, right? I'm still holding money.
Yep.
This, this is the bonus round. I still have an agreement.
So kind of an related part of it, under our permit, uh, the town also has to do regular maintenance for the stormwater basins, the retention basins that we've already approved. Do we get a report to some terms of their condition, how things are holding out?
Um, so they call those BMPs, best management practices. And I did get a report. I want to say in twenty twenty three, um, from the DPW.
Yeah.
Um, that was from their consultant. As we all know, there's not a lot of money for any of this, so I know there's some money in the capital plan. At this town meeting to perhaps, and, and to do MS four stuff. I'm not sure if that's it or not. But yes, I mean, I'll be happy to share that report with you if you want from twenty twenty three. It listed the detention basins around town. Because I think I had to go back and tell John one of them was ours. It was private. So.
Yeah, I'd just be curious just to make sure like they're working as intended. We haven't had any problems. I don't, I haven't heard of any yet.
I have not either. I have not either, right? So um. But yeah, I mean, I think. And not so much an issue right at this very moment, but, but the more that gets built, obviously. The less it has to run off, the less space it has to run off to.
So I'm not recalling, um. There must be something that says that those kinds of assessments have to be done every so often. So if the last one we saw was in twenty twenty three, then when is the next one, the next report like that?
I don't, because that's, that falls under the purview of the DPW. So I, I don't, I'm not privy to that information, how often they have to have.
In our stormwater that speaks to that?
No. No.
Okay.
No. No, it's under the MS four permit, that, that, those are required.
Okay.
And they did share that with me the last time they had it done.
Okay.
So I'm happy to, I will actually write myself a note. And I'll send it to all of you.
So you're gonna send us that and all, well, what else, all this, the chapter? Stuff that I formulated to you and you're gonna send that out to the guys?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
What else do we have?
And the CPTC stuff I'm gonna send out to everybody.
Yeah, I will, as a member of the CTP, Citizens Planner Training Collaborative Board. We meet on Wednesday at nine thirty by a Zoom and I will make sure that my friends send that. We also have an Old Colling Planning Council, GTC meeting on Thursday.
Oh, you'll be busy.
I have three Zoom meetings on Thursday.
Is there anything anybody else wants to talk about next Monday night? We're getting ready to do that agenda and what? What did I ask you to?
I wrote in my email.
I know, right? I did have one thing on there, but the um. Discussion of zoning articles in case anybody, something comes up, then you guys need to take some action on something.
Yeah, so what, what time will we be meeting?
Six o'clock at the high school.
Oh, can I bring up something I saw?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. The site, this.
Oh, um, limited site line review application. So Kevin's been working on that, um, so we're gonna ask you guys to look at it and.
Yep.
Approve, not approve, but with the ADUs. They've been able, we have actually had, I want to say. Four, maybe five applications at this point. Um, none of them are coming our way. But when they do, when it's a detached structure for the ADU. If our bylaw passes. And if the attorney general approves it. Um, but for right now, they have to conform with it, which means we need to have an application for them to apply with. That dawned on me like a couple of weeks ago, like we have no application for limited site line review. So we'll just have you guys look at it and send it out to you and so you can take a look at it before Monday night.
Yeah, one thing before we wrap up, I wanted to mention, I saw on Facebook today, something that pertains to Martin's Bakery. Uh, there was an article about that by uh, the nephew, grandson, nephew of it. And that building used to be, uh, it had three storefronts on it. It had. Bakery, it had a barber shop and I think.
Cobbler.
Cobbler, and upstairs they had a dress shop. And um. The barber shop was Dave Nisby's, who.
Moved across the street.
Moved across the street. And now it's Rick's Barber Shop. And uh, the Villa family bought out the rest of the building and as the bakery business declined. Uh, they put more emphasis on the restaurant. But you know, it's funny, a lot of this happened in the uh. Late seventies, early eighties.
Right, I'm not gonna tell you how much I miss those lemon cupcakes.
I've been a resident of this town all my life, so it was interesting to, to see that, you know, and, you know, how to. And, you know, it would have been interesting to see a picture of that building when we did the uh, North Abington. You know, Stein show that we had recently. But if anyone who's watching this can look that up, was an interesting article. A little bit.
Yep.
The architectural history of North Abington Center.
Green wave gazette.
Green gauge.
That's where it was.
Yes, yes.
More coming tomorrow.
Excellent. Are you doing a follow up? I was just gonna say, I bet I have a postcard of North Abington Center.
Was that yours, Rick?
No.
No.
Joshua Rex, right?
Yeah, it was uh, one of the family members.
Yeah, it's a great nephew.
Past few days, so I haven't been coming.
It was a great article, you know. And uh.
We can't wait for them to reopen.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to talk about tonight?
Well, on the subject of Martins, I think we're aware of the problems that they've had up there, the fire. And I understand that the Veterans Agent, Adam is kind of orchestrating a fund. Um, soliciting contributions that will be provided back to Martins to help. The people who are out of work as a result of the fire and until the renovations have been completed. So um. Certainly a worthwhile project.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm too young to join the old guys group that beats there for coffee, but I'm working on it.
Well, if you're nice to my husband, maybe he can let you in.
Alright. Alright, um, so I guess do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Owen, for watching this March thirty first meeting and we'll see you at uh, town meeting next Monday.